...all employees in the city and all the residents, Father God bless them in a mighty way. Oh God my master, we thank you for allowing us to come, just to say thank you. Oh God my master bless each and every one here on the sound of my voice. And oh God my master, if you so please, look upon this town and look upon the officials, look at them in a mighty way and oh God bless them they'll be able to run this town. Father God with you in mind. Oh God we thank you, we praise you and we glorify you. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Place the flag please.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Paglirini, are we in compliance with the Freedom of Information Act?
Mayor Page, you're in compliance.
Thank you. Item number four, approval of the agenda.
Motion, please.
Second.
I have a motion as second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it. We have a couple of public hearings and then some awards and presentations. So we will open the first public hearing. I'll turn it over to Kristine Farrell.
Good evening. Actually, we have two public hearings tonight. Both of them are pertaining to Central Mount Pleasant. And we did include a note on the agenda, so I want to take one second to make sure that everyone understood the note and understood what next steps are going to be with respect to public hearings for Central Mount Pleasant. And I think that most of you are certainly aware that the Planning Commission of the planning of Central Mount Pleasant, their February 18th meeting, there was some information that was received that day by the Planning Commission from the developer in response to some staff comments and requests from the Planning Commission before the public hearing. They left it open until their March 18th meeting. So there will be a public hearing on this zoning with the Planning Commission on March 18th. But because they deferred that, there was no action and no recommendations on comprehensive plan requests and also on the impact assessment request. And so those will be forthcoming. With respect to the items that you have on the agenda tonight, the first one is a request to amend the comprehensive plan. And just to make sure that everyone is aware why this is on the agenda, that had to be advertised 30 days prior to tonight's meeting. So it was advertised before the Planning Commission meeting and before the Planning Commission recommended or deferred the item at their last meeting. So that is why that is on the agenda. We had advertised the development agreement at the same time, and so that is why that is on the agenda for the public hearing. I would offer and suggest that tonight with respect to the comprehensive plan, we only have one public hearing for the comprehensive plan, but since your Planning Commission has not yet made your recommended recommendation, that perhaps we could hold another public hearing or continue this public hearing at the April Town Council meeting. We will have another public hearing for your development agreement because there's a priority too. So there's one that's tonight and there's one that will be at your next meeting. So there's two public hearings regarding that. So if there's not any questions about kind of where we are and what opportunities there are going to be for public comment in the future, I'll go into the first public hearing item. This is a public hearing to receive input on a request to amend the Town Mount Pleasant Comprehensive Plan 2009 through 2019. This is a future land use map. And this is pertaining to 109 acre development, otherwise known as Central Mount Pleasant. And the request is to change the land use designation from low density residential to commercial for an approximate only 30.25 acre portion of that development.
Thank you, Ms. Farrell. Any questions from the council? Anyone here to speak on this issue? This public hearing is closed. The second public hearing?
Second public hearing is to receive input and propose amendments in the development agreement for House of Track Associate LLC project known as Central Mount Pleasant, which is located at Fitting Road and Bowman Road, 109 acres. This is the first required public hearing for this request to amend the development agreement. The second public hearing is scheduled for Tuesday, April 14th at 6:00 PM here in Council Chambers of Town Hall.
Thank you very much for that, Ms. Farrell. Any questions from council?
Madam Mayor, I'd just like to make a comment that I'm against any, you know, the change in the development agreement as stated by you. I just want to make sure that's out there.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone here signed up to speak on this issue? This public hearing is closed. Thank you very much. And then I believe we have a proclamation.
Yes, Mayor. Council members, will you join me up front, please?
You got it.
Mayor Page, members of council, we have a proclamation this evening honoring the American Red Cross. Joining us tonight is the CEO Louise Wells-Williams. Welcome Louise. Board member Stuart Smith and Blood Services Representative Catherine Pratt. Would you join us up front, please?
Come on up. Welcome. Welcome to the house, how are you? Nice to see you. Hi, good morning. Nice to see you.
Proclamation. Whereas American Red Cross Month is a special time to recognize and thank our everyday heroes, those who reach out to help people in need. Whereas, American Red Cross heroes help disaster victims recover. They give blood to help a hospital patient. They brighten the day of an injured service member. They step forward to help someone having a heart attack. Whereas, we would like to remember our heroes here in Mount Pleasant who helped people in need. They worked tirelessly to assist their neighbors when they needed a helping hand. And whereas, across the country and around the world, the American Red Cross responded to disasters. When an injured service member ended up in a hospital park and home, the American Red Cross offered comfort. When a hospital patient needed blood, American Red Cross blood donors helped them. When a lifeguard jumped in to save a drowning child or someone stepped up to help a heart attack victim, the American Red Cross was there. Whereas, we dedicate the month of March to all those who support the American Red Cross mission to prevent and alleviate human suffering in the face of emergencies. Our community depends on the American Red Cross, which relies on donations of time, money, and blood to fulfill its humanitarian mission. Now therefore, I, Mayor Page, Mayor of the Town of Mount Pleasant, do hereby proclaim March 2015 as American Red Cross Month.
We just wanted to thank the City of Mount Pleasant for being such a good partner. As you know, we have the home tour here next month, a good event that y'all always support, and we thank you. Your Red Cross touches one in every four life in South Carolina, whether that be through our CPR, first aid, and water safety, or through our life-saving blood. As you know, we have a blood center across the street, and let me tell you, people in Mount Pleasant aren't shy about rolling up a sleeve to save a life. So thank you for that as well. We respond to the needs of a house fire victim every 3.9 hours in South Carolina. We assisted 224 people last year just in Charleston County. So again, thank you for your partnership. Chief Williams and his firefighters are wonderful to work with. We really appreciate that. And while none of us can erase the challenges that our military and their families face every day, through lost loved ones, injury, or all kinds of challenges when they get home, what the Red Cross does do is make sure they don't face those challenges alone. So we touched 1,200 people right here in the Low Country, military and their families last year. So just please know that we're here and we appreciate all you do to support us.
Meeting and the February 2015 financial statement.
Second.
I have a motion as second. Any discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have something on page 10 of the minutes. There was a statement made at the last meeting that I think wasn't exactly correct, and I think maybe we ought to have an opportunity to change that. It was a statement by Mr. Glasson that said, "A vote on the motion." I think that the motion that Mr. Garch had made will end any public dollars going into an office building or parking spaces. There will be zero public dollars spent at any level on this project. I don't think that's what we did when we made the motion. I just think that maybe that was just an error when he spoke, and I just think we need to correct that because we didn't remove the funding. Maybe we ought to ask David what would be the best way to amend that. I know we can't take that out of the minutes, but we might want to clarify that statement that we did not remove the funding from the garage. We simply voted, I guess, against the amendment that they wanted us to, that they wanted to make.
Certainly, if Mr. Glasson, if he wanted to clarify whatever statement, assuming the statement is correct as he stated, you can't change that, but he could clarify if he wishes, or he can conclude that the statement is made by Mr. Santos, clarifications enough.
Was that part of the motion?
Where are you reading from, Gary?
From the minutes of last meeting, page 10, first paragraph.
Bear with us for a minute.
Mayor, you want a copy? Let me show you to you.
Well, certainly, I think we would all like a copy so we could understand what we are being asked to clarify.
The answer to your question, no, that's not part of the motion.
Then I don't wish to change anything that I stated, then we'll just move forward.
The motion was nothing to do about not committing any public funding. I mean, Gary's making a good point. I have to say that. The motion was clear that we were not going to amend any new contracts with the applicant, which was seconded, and I'm sure by you and you unanimous vote. There might have been some comments after that, but I think that's what Mr. Santos was referring to.
No, I don't think that affects the direction that council has gone, so I'd just like to leave it as is and move on.
Okay, so with that, I believe there's no action if Mr. Glasson doesn't want to amend his comment?
Well, there's a motion on the table for approval of the minutes. You can vote on that or amend it, or anything you typically do in any vote.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the ayes have it.
No.
No, also.
No.
Do you want a roll call? We have three noes. Are we comfortable with that? Are y'all correct? Okay, we have three noes. You have it, Christine? Thank you. Item number seven is correspondence and public statements. Do we have anyone signed up to speak?
Yes, Mayor. I need it, Tankersley. Ms. Tankersley?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
It's your birthday. You deserve to go first.
ask that all council members and committees and all such things is that, that whenever items come before you to vote on developments, projects, et cetera, that if there's ever been any time that you have accepted any gifts, campaign contributions, or any consideration whatsoever from the developers, that you recuse yourself from voting on these projects, whether your vote would have been yea or nay. I think it's only the ethical thing to do to recuse yourself. I'd like to respectfully ask that you do that.
Thank you, thanks, lady. Can you believe it? It's less than two minutes? Yes, it was less than two minutes. It's your birthday. Things are going well. And happy birthday.
Thank you.
Ms. Tankersley was our only speaker that was signed up this evening, so we will move on with planning new business. Ms. Farrell, you're up again.
The first item that we have for planning new business is a request to rezone from R1 to Public Institutional 1. This is a property located at 3058 Highway 17 North. It's known as East Ridge Presbyterian Church. It's in front of Ivy Hall and Floral Grove.
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the ayes have it.
First reading ordinance number 15017, an ordinance to rezone from R1, low-density residential district of PI1. Public Institutional 1 District, property located at 3058 US Highway 17 North and known as East Ridge Presbyterian Church.
Item number two is the Dunes West Plan Development Parcelment 10.
Yes, this is a request to amend the Dunes West Plan Development Ordinance. This is for a 16.34 acre parcel that's located on Highway 41, shown on the map on the screen. Currently, the zoning for the property within the Dunes West PD is R1. The request is to rezone a portion of the property to what's called Town Center in the Dunes West PD, and that would be for the portion that is closest to Wood Park Drive here. And then that would be for an 8.13 portion, and then the balance, 8.21, to be zoned commercial within the Dunes West PD. The land use recommendation for this property is commercial on the town's future land use map. There was no impact assessment required at this time in conjunction with this rezoning request because the request does comply with the comprehensive plan. I would like to note that it has previously been mentioned in Planning Commission and Planning Committee that there are no development plans for the property at this time. However, the applicant did request a meeting with staff for a pre-application meeting, which is required for impact assessments, and this meeting was yesterday. And so staff did have an opportunity to see what the intended development plans were yesterday for the property. There is, everything that was shown on the plan is permitted use currently within the Dunes West PD if this rezoning were approved. They are showing a grocery. They are showing some fueling stations, not necessarily a gas station, but fueling positions, some retail, as well as a couple of out parcels that I believe are intended to be restaurant uses on the property. And as I stated, all of these are permitted uses either in the commercial district or within the Town Center District within the Dunes West Plan Development Ordinance. The Planning Commission, as well as the Planning Committee, reviewed this, and as noted, when we met previously, there was not a known development plan, so they did not have that information at that point in time. But both the Planning Commission and Planning Committee have recommended approval of the rezoning request.
Thank you, Ms. Farrell, for that information. Questions?
Just.
Motion, I guess for clarification, we probably need a motion and a second for discussion.
For approval for discussion purposes.
Sorry. Okay, I have a motion and a second for discussion purposes. And you have a question, Mr. Carrier?
I do. Why would not this, since we have the plans intact now, or not intact, but some semblance of plan, why wouldn't we just start the process over through the commission?
Well, they're two separate actions anyway. They always appear as two separate actions on your agenda, even if they happen to run concurrently. So in this particular case, the applicant has requested the zoning, and then if that is approved, are coming later with the impact assessment. So that's, it really is kind of the same process that we already have, it's just typically, you know, you see them concurrently on the agenda, but you do vote on the two separately.
Thank you, Ms. Farrell. Yes, or Mr. Nichols?
Yeah. Good evening to everybody, first of all. Kristine, can you tell us a little bit about, I think you said it was yesterday that a plan was reviewed by?
They came in for what's called a pre-application meeting.
And went over the plan?
Yes, sir.
Can you just highlight for me, please, the big picture of what occurred at that meeting? What we were?
But anytime there is to be an impact assessment that's going to be submitted to the Planning Commission and council for consideration, we require a pre-application meeting. And the purpose of the pre-application meeting is so the applicant can share information with staff in advance. This meeting includes planning staff as well as transportation, as well as our stormwater engineers. And it's at that point in time, for example, Mr. Morrison will indicate to them what intersections may need to be studied with it. Our engineer may point out what needs to be studied in terms of stormwater and so on. And so it's kind of gives us a chance to tell the applicant exactly what they need to be reviewing and considering and putting into their impact assessment submittal. So that is what occurred yesterday.
What uses were shown?
Store, 45,000 square feet. They were showing fueling positions, and so it's not a gas station. Really, it's, you maybe have seen them in other places where you can go up and fuel, and perhaps you pay inside the larger store. It's not like a convenience store. I'm sorry.
Can you give me an example of that locally that I might?
Well, it's the only ones that I can think of off the top of my head. I don't want to alarm anybody, but Costco does things like that. We're not talking about Costco, but you know, they have the fueling.
Okay, so it's fuel pumps, without necessarily the convenience store like on top of it?
Exactly. That's right. They were showing retail, about 11,000 square feet, and they were also showing two out parcels, which I believe they anticipate to be probably restaurant uses.
Did they show how many, how many gas pumps?
Six. And also, as a matter of information, that plan that was presented to staff for this pre-application meeting covered about two-thirds of the property, and so.
Show where?
It was, whoops, I need you to go back. About two-thirds of the property, so generally this area right here. And so this part is just considered as future development. We did discuss that with them, that they may have to come back at a later date even with an impact assessment on that portion as well.
Thank you.
Are you stuck?
I'm done, thanks.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, when we had the previous gas station proposal before us, at the entrance of Rivertown, there was strong feedback that we received from the community for the particular placement of it, primarily, as I recall, based on the one entrance and exit of Rivertown and safety and convenience and the reasons that came along with that, in addition to the fact that there was two gas stations already on 41. I'm a little, while I'm excited that we're actually having a conversation about, from an economic development perspective, of turning this into commercial use, which is in line with our plan, land use plan, I'm excited that we're doing that. I'm concerned about having, being forced to have a knee-jerk reaction to the insertion of a gas station in this development without the public. The council just realized this as of yesterday. So I would be concerned about moving, rushing and moving too quickly to make that decision here tonight without having the public have any opportunity to understand and weigh in on this, because the factors that went into the significant outpouring of a negative for the gas station at Rivertown, in my opinion, based on the quick five phone calls I made today, with the limited information that I had today, all five persons, two in Rivertown, one in Park West, one in Dunes West, and one in the gates that abuts that, were in favor of a gas station being included in that, since the gas station now at 41, thus making the only gas station available. But I'm very hesitant to vote based on a very insignificant, unquantifiable group of only five people representing from those communities. So my question is, do we have to move forward on this? Is deferring this item an option for us, an approval? Approval with conditions, a denial, or a deferral for 30 days so that the public can be aware of what we've been made aware of and have an opportunity to weigh in on this, knowing that if we put conditions on it, it would have to go through BOZA and those processes? I hate to place unnecessary restrictions on a person who's trying to do something that's in line with our land use plan unnecessarily so in making assumptions that none of us have the knowledge that any of these residents have in their head. They haven't had the opportunity to weigh in, and that's not fair.
Well, Mr. Smith, I will ask Mr. Paglirini to help me clarify that. I do believe we could vote on the zoning and take portions of it out. Is that correct, Mr. Paglirini?
Right. And Christine, I think the way to do is you could approve regarding fuel supply station, however you wanted to do that. You could very well defer it off. I would think, though, within 30 or 60 days, I'm not so sure that the situation's going to change, with the exception of your issue regarding public comment on it.
Well, all of our constituents would have the opportunity to weigh in to their elected officials if they like the project or not. None of us have that luxury.
Right.
You're correct. Mr. Garch had a comment or question?
Kristine, the entire piece, is it in the green or is it also across the road?
That's right. It's just the green.
And by design, they're splitting it up into two pieces?
That's right.
Ten and eight?
Eight and eight.
Eight and eight. And tell us about how this process would move forward as far as not being allowed to piecemeal this thing as they go. In other words, come out with a detailed plan, everybody understands it, and it's not just, well, this is what's happened now, I'm going to do this. How's that work with your department?
Well, as I mentioned a minute ago, when we saw the plan yesterday, there is an area that is shown as future development. And so we did already put them on notice that that very well could also have to require an additional impact assessment if and when that piece of property is done. So it could occur in two pieces, but not in a way that would not still require at least both portions to come up for approval.
And this piece here, this is a typical piece that had our standard yellow signs out, notification about a potential rezoning coming.
That's right.
And can you speak to any inquiries from the public when those signs went up?
We did not have that many. We had a few with it, and we had a few speakers even at the committee. You all reviewed this request. You had some inquiries about what the permitted uses would be, but that was pretty much it. It was not a large number.
Number of other questions at this time, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nichols, do you have another question or comment?
I'll defer to my Planning Commission Chair next to the group.
I'll just say, in Planning Committee, we had a lot of discussion about this parcel and what potentially would happen, and we had some ladies who showed up from Dunes West. And their concern was, not with the zoning, they were okay with commercial zoning. Dunes West, they're entitled to these units for the development agreement. It's just a question of where they allocate their units, similar to what we saw with Park West. So they're approved for these units. If you're going to put commercial, it seems to make sense that you're going to put commercial out on the road rather than in the neighborhood or somewhere around the neighborhood. So this, our comprehensive plan called for this. So I don't think the concern was ever commercial, and they don't have other commercial zoning uses, as I understand it, other than these two remaining for units. Is that correct, Ms. Farrell?
This, they'll pretty much be out of their Town Center and Commercial acreage with this, and then I imagine that this one will be coming forward with a similar request. They do have a substantial number. They do have a substantial number, or substantial, substantial amount of office professional left. They really only use that right near the clubhouse there. But in terms of your more standard commercial districts there, they are limited to ten acres for the town center and fifteen per commercial. And so, this in and of itself eats up sixteen acres of that.
And the concern, this concern we heard from the public about any development that may come forward is they would want to know what was there. And I think we all agreed at committee that any development that was proposed would likely, or almost certainly trigger an impact assessment unless they created something that essentially had no density whatsoever, any traffic count. So, the public would have notice of a project that was going to come. They would have notice of the impact assessment. This council could essentially do certain things at that time. The problem was going to be, as we discussed at committee, if they, the gas station concern had come up in this area. So, really, the only concern that we, I think, approached at committee was if there were gas uses on this site. So, having said that, I'm going to make a motion that we approve the zoning as requested, with the condition that there are no gas uses on this parcel.
Maybe you could ask Mr. Carrier to amend his.
We already got a motion on table.
There's a motion on the floor.
For clarification.
Right. If you wanted to make a motion, it should be to amend, and then we could have a vote on the amendment.
Yeah. That would be my motion, is to amend, amend the motion to approve the request as stated, with the condition that they not be allowed any gas uses on site.
Second time. Yes.
Okay. So, for clarification, now we have two motions, amendment on the motion, a motion on the table as well. And if further, further questions or comment?
We're in the discussion period for the amendment.
Yes. Yes, we're in discussion now for the amendment. Any other further discussion? Yes, sir. Mr. Nichols?
Hopefully, what we've tried to accomplish through Chris's motion, my second, would be that we approve the amendment, but we exclude from the approval the six service pumps. That's my intention. If I haven't, if I haven't done that.
Or any, any self-service gas station or gas station service?
Period. For all the reasons that.
Mr. Paglirini's shaking his head yes, so I'm guessing.
Right. Because you want to broadly do it, because otherwise, you're just excluding a specific.
Right. No service station, no standalone pumps. Not here, not there.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, you have another comment?
Two quick questions. One, when these plans come, the sketch plans that you saw, does it include residential? Are we going to be dealing with these added bonus densities and mixed use? Is this a mixed-use plan that you've seen, or is it purely a commercial plan?
That, that plan is purely commercial. Now, I will make sure that everybody's aware that the TC district, as well as the commercial district in Dunes West, allow R3, which is single-family home. So, it's just, you know, with approval of this zoning and that, and I think y'all are aware that the Dunes West PD is very flexible in terms of the permitted uses within the districts. And so, that, those, those will be permitted uses, single-family homes.
Thank you for that clarification. And then, my final thought, just restating this again, perhaps a very short reality check for especially folks who live in that area and boat in that area. You no longer will be able to pull your boat and gas up at the docks that are the bridge now. You will go to the only gas station, creating more traffic on Joe Rouse with a boat in tow to gas up a boat. And that came up from three of the five conversations about their residents in that area. Not one opposition fellow council members did I hear. They said they'd like to see how it was designed and how it was, we're creating, in my opinion, unnecessary burdens on property owners without full and accurate information and a knee-jerk reaction because of opposition from our former gas station that has different reasons for opposing it. I just am pleading with us to reconsider that we don't have enough information to put this restriction on this development. There's no reason to act so quickly. Let's get information and understand what our constituents actually want.
Yes, sir.
Madam Mayor, we always have a second reading, right? And so, we can, we can communicate with the folks out there. I agree with what Mark's saying. If you only have that one gas station, with people trying to get in there and get gas, forget the boats, just get in to get gas, or else you've got to go to forty-one, which is already extremely congested, because people are stopping there. So, I agree that we ought to, we ought to reach out to the citizens out there, let them know what's going on, and let them tell us what they think. We've got a second reading on that. So, if we go forward with this, fine. But I think maybe Martin or somebody can, can reach out to them and at least let them know what's going on, and let's get their opinion on it as well.
Thank you, Mr. Santos. Do you have a response to that or?
Just a final response, if I may. In addition to Rivertown, Park West, Dunes West, our good friends across the river are going to be adding a few new homes across the bridge that are going to further exacerbate the problem with fueling cars and motorized toys that we have access to enjoy the beautiful waterways in that area of town.
Thank you. Mayor Protown?
I'd just like to just make a clarification. My understanding is that the applicant met with staff to review a pre-application proposal. Is that correct?
That's right.
All right. So, that meeting and the information that you guys discussed in reference to what they, their intention, what they are looking at ultimately constructing on this property, that was for discussion, the purpose of give them a sense of what they can and what they cannot do. Is that correct?
Well, it's an opportunity to, for them, to let staff know what they're going to be submitting, and in turn, an opportunity particularly for Mr. Morrison, to advise the applicant what they need to be studying with respect to transportation, but also stormwater, any environmental issues, cultural issues, cultural, archaeological, all this.
Now, once that has been conducted, then the applicant still has to go through the process.
Yes, ma'am. The pre-application.
Planning Commission, the public hearings that's required and everything. So, I think, you know, what you guys are saying about allowing and providing an opportunity for the residents to be aware of, you know, what the intent is, I think the process already includes that. You know, the meeting that the applicant had with our planning staff, that is nowhere in this decision that we're looking at making tonight. I think I received that primarily as information.
Thank you, Ms. Dokes-Marshall. Anyone else? So, we will vote on the amendment first. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
Nay.
So, we have two noes?
Who is it? Mr. Glasson or anyone else?
Mr. Smith? That was on the amendment. Now, on the original motion, which is the motion to rezone. Correct, Mr. Christine? It was the motion to approve the zoning?
Yes.
So, we have a motion to approve and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the ayes have it.
First reading, ordinance number one five zero one eight, in order to amend the Dunes West Plan Development District ordinance pertaining to a portion thereof known as Dunes West fossil town.
Item number three is a first reading on a conservation design district on Old Georgetown. Farrell?
Yes, this is an amendment to an existing conservation design plan development. This is, pertains to setbacks within the development. The, as, as the ordinance reads now for this particular PD, they do not allow for what is a zero-yard setback adjacent to HOA. That is, the desire of the developer is to be able to have a zero-yard setback when it's, when a property is adjacent to a pond or a park or something else within the development. And they are also requesting to modify the front and side yard setbacks to a minimum of two feet. They still will have to have ten-foot building separation.
Move for approval.
Move for first reading. Second.
I have several motions and seconds for first reading. Any discussion? Yes, sir. Mr. Smith, do you have a comment?
No, no, no.
Okay. So, do you have a motion?
Who is the second?
Who is the second? Mr. Glasson? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? And the ayes have it.
First reading, ordinance number one five zero one nine, in order to provide for a second amendment to PD CD Plan Development Conservation Design District Ordinance one three zero five three pertaining to property known as Old Georgetown PD CD.
Item number four is a first reading on the ordinance providing for the annexation of three tracts of land, US Highway seventeen near Copey Road.
Move for first reading.
Second.
I have a motion, a second for first reading. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? And the ayes have it.
First reading, ordinance number one five zero two zero, in order to provide for the annexation of three tracts of land comprising approximately two-point-eight-four acres located on the south side of US Highway seventeen north near Copey Road.
I believe that item number five is the rezoning of that same property.
Move for first reading.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? And the ayes have it.
First reading, ordinance number one five zero two one, in order to zone AD, Area-Wide Business District, and SBOD, Sweetgrass Basket Overlay District, three tracts of land comprising approximately two-point-eight-four acres located on the south side of US Highway seventeen north near Copey Road.
Item number six is a first reading to rezone four tracts of land comprising fourteen-point-two-seven acres located on Tea Planters Lane and Sweetgrass Basket Parkway to PD, MUSR Plan Development.
Here for approval with staff comments.
Second.
I have a motion for approval and a second subject to staff comments. I have a comment for Mr. Carrier.
Just a clarification on the workforce housing element.
Yes, sir.
Can you clarify that?
They have, it's not required by our ordinances, but they have offered to include it. And by way of approval of this PD, it will be required. So, it will, and they have ten percent for a period of ten years for the workforce units. Ten percent of the units are required.
Thank you.
Another comment? Mr. Smith, you good?
Madam Mayor, I would just want to go on the record to publicly commend this developer, the developer, with the outstanding job they did here, and say that you are a role model, and I hope others will follow your lead. Thank you.
We all know we need that workforce housing and how important it is to our community. I appreciate your comments, Mr. Smith. We have a motion and a second. We've had some discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? And the ayes have it.
First reading, ordinance number one five zero two two, in order to rezone four tracts of land comprising approximately fourteen-point-two-seven acres of land located on Tea Planters Lane and Sweetgrass Basket Parkway known as Six Mile Marketplace from AB, Area-Wide Business District, PD, MUSR, Plan Development, Mixed Use Suburban Rural District.
Item number seven is the impact assessment and conceptual plan for that same property.
Move for approval and clear staff comments.
Second.
If I could get one clarification, there weren't any recommendations with the impact assessment, except for to try to place a timing on the construction of the bus shelter.
Right.
And so, if we could prior to first, I mean, excuse me, prior to certificate occupancy for the construction of the shelter.
Okay. Would you include that in your motion?
Yeah. Matter of fact, that's what I referred to when I said staff comments. In other words, it says that you're asking, we're working out. Thank you.
Okay. So, we have a motion, a second with staff comments and the additional clarification from Ms. Farrell. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? And the ayes have it. All right. Moving on to old business. Item number one is the final reading on the PD CD for Pepper Plantation lots twelve and twenty-eight.
Move for final reading.
Second.
I have a motion, a second for final reading. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? One no.
Final reading, ordinance number one five zero one zero, in order to zone PD CD Plan Development Conservation Design District, two tracts of land comprising lots twelve and twenty-eight located in Pepper Plantation subdivision.
Thank you. Item number two is a final reading on an ordinance providing for the annexation of a parcel of land at Washridge Court.
Move for final reading.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? And the ayes have it.
Final reading, ordinance number one five zero one four, in order to provide for the annexation of a parcel of land located at one zero nine three, Washridge Court, AKA ten ninety-three Panther Court, FNA thirteen nineteen C, Myra Ward, identified by TMS number five three two zero eight zero 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 three seven.
Thank you. Item number three is a final reading of an ordinance providing for the annexation of three tracts of land at Ten Mile Community. And this was recommended for annexation, but I will ask you for some clarification, Ms. Farrell.
We, as you recall, last month, there was also a zoning request with this. The zoning request was denied. The annexation had first reading. The applicant has, or, excuse me, the property owner, has withdrawn the annexation petition for this piece of property. So, there is nothing for consideration for final reading. The applicant did also, however, submit a letter, which I, I've emailed to all of you all today, requesting a waiver to reapply within less than, than one year. And so, that is, I suppose, up for your consideration, or if you would prefer that it be noted on an agenda next month, we can do it next month and have it as a specific agenda item.
Thank you very much. A little clarification from Mr. Paglirini. So, it would be okay to entertain it now, or we could take it up at a, at a separate agenda?
Yes, ma'am. The requirement is that there be some change in circumstance. And if you accept that that letter request is a change in circumstance, it would be appropriate if you all would like to address it at this issue. Of course, we always like to make sure that there's notice for these items, and you could very well put it on next month's agenda as well.
Thank you very much. And I believe we have a question, but could we get a motion and a second, just open for discussion?
To move. That's a motion to grant the waiver?
Motion to grant the waiver? I'll second that.
Okay. So, we have a motion and a second to grant the waiver. Comment, Mayor Protown?
That's, I was going to make that motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you wanted a comment. I'm sorry. I thought you wanted to ask a question. Okay. So, we got it done either way. Thank you, Mayor Protown. I appreciate that. Any other comments? It's open now for comment. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? And the ayes have it. Moving on to committee reports. Accommodation Tax Advisory Committee.
Well, that's me. And I'd like to, there we go. We did meet, and we met just this last Thursday, March fifth, two thousand and fifteen, to make recommendations for nine funding requests for which the committee received applications. Know that the current balance available is twenty-four thousand, three hundred and ninety-one. Council received a summary of the requests and the ATAC committee's recommendations for funding the nine requests which total twenty-four hundred dollars. However, just on Monday, the USS Yorktown Foundation requested that the Girl Scout Jamboree application be removed from consideration since the event will not occur. Therefore, council will, this council should consider the remaining eight applications, which total twenty-three thousand dollars. If council accepts the committee's recommendations, this will leave a thirteen-hundred, thirteen-hundred-and-ninety-one dollar balance. As such, council, I move that we approve the funding recommendations totaling twenty-three thousand dollars. Let me put them out there. Low Country Open Water Swim at fifteen hundred, the Old Village Home Garden and Art Tour at one thousand, the Rice Planters Amateur Golf Tournament at fifteen hundred, the Sweetgrass Cultural Arts Festival at six thousand, the South Carolina State Time Trial Championship at one thousand, the Charleston Race Week at eight thousand, Vietnam War Welcome Home Party, three thousand, and the Seventh Cavalry Reunion at one thousand dollars. I put that in the form of a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the Accommodation Tax Advisory report. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? And the ayes have it.
And then, finally, just by report, the second quarter revenue payment was received. It totaled two-hundred-nine-thousand, eight-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars. And compared to the second quarter last year, that was flat. No significant increase or decrease. And that concludes my report.
Thank you for your work on that committee, Mr. Nichols.
Thank you.
Purchases Committee?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This report only. The bid opening for the construction of the restroom facilities at the farmer's market was held on February the fifth, two thousand and fifteen. The four bids received. The committee determined that IPW Construction Group is the lowest, most responsive, and responsible bidder for the construction of the farmer's market restroom facility, and awarded the contract the amount of one-hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand, nine-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars. And we are informed that that process would be completed during a hundred-and-twenty days. And that concludes my report. And I'm delighted to let everyone know we will have restrooms shortly, if this motion is not defeated here tonight, if there were any particular reason.
Nice, ma'am.
Thank you. So, you make that in form of a motion to accept that bid?
That, that, that's correct.
Second.
Okay. I'm waiting for a second.
Sorry.
No, 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 no.
Oh, we already don't need it. That's fine. Did you have a comment, Mr. Garch, about the restroom?
Just a quick question. Do we, do we know where the physical location of the restrooms will be, Ashley? On the farmer's market? If I'm looking at it from Coleman?
It's the location of course, it's the seventh street lot, right near the apartment lot towards.
Very good. Thank you. Looking forward to it.
We're looking forward to that porta potty. We won't miss that trailer for it. We're appreciative of it, though.
Those are two very fine portable toilets in town.
Yeah, but we're going to have permanent restrooms there now.
Yes, yes. Economic Development Committee?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a report only. Staff provided an overview of the town's economic development strategy to include the business development incubator strategy. Several successes were highlighted. Included the Harbor Accelerator Centers Growth, Hubner Manufacturers' recent announcement on their third expansion, and the continued focus on working with our economic development partners and stakeholders. Further discussion was held on the future implementation of the plan and the hiring of the full-time on the future implementation of the plan and the hiring of a full-time economic development person, and we are continuing to look forward to this year as we listen for the economic development stakeholders.
Thank you. I appreciate that report. Education Committee. Mr. Garch.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of council, we did not meet, but I wanted to inform all of you that Mr. Demore and I had a chance to sit down with Kate Darby and Kristoobs, our two representatives on the school board, about a week and a half ago, just to catch up, and I wanted to wait a couple of months for them to get their feet wet. And I'm here to tell you that for the first time since 1968, since the school district was consolidated, we have two very motivated individuals that live in the town of Mount Pleasant, and this is good news for us. Secondly, not to get too far out there, you've seen in the paper some potential movement by some folks with the Charleston County Republican Party about discussions about breaking into the district. We see these things from time to time. I conveyed to the newspaper as one of nine that I, as chairman of education, that no one has reached out to me to get my opinion, not that they have to get my opinion. I don't know if they've reached out to y'all, but I wanted to make it clear to the Post and Courier, because they're writing editorials themselves. We're not sitting here talking about any, we're always open, we're always listening, but those, I haven't seen any semblance of any kind of a plan. Right, you know, we've enjoyed the past 20 years in our relationship with Charleston County School District, and I believe it can only get better. So I just wanted to make sure that y'all knew that from me as the chair of the committee. I haven't heard a thing, and if anybody's approached you and you think that you ever can convey to me tonight or any other time, please do so. That concludes my report.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I have not been reached out to myself, Mr. Garch, either. So Finance Committee.
Madam Mayor, we did meet, and we have a couple of action items for this evening. The first item is we had a lot of discussion around salary increases for the mayor and council members. We looked at the fact that the salaries have not been raised since 1996, and the committee voted unanimously to recommend to council that the mayor's salary be increased from $24,000 per year to $42,000 per year, and the council member's salaries be increased from $8,918 per year to $15,000 per year, be effective December 1st, 2015, after the upcoming election. And provided that this motion is successful, or this action item is successful, the increase would be incorporated into the FY 2015 budget ordinance. Therefore, I place this in the form of a motion to council.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Smith?
Would the Finance Committee entertain an option to divide that into two separate motions, please? I think it's, everyone here is well aware that I, I have gone on the record and said I would support the increase in the mayor's salary, but I just, I absolutely would not support an increase in the council member's salary. So I would ask, would you consider an amendment to the motion so that I can support the mayor's increase in, in salary? Otherwise, I'm going to be forced to vote no on this issue entirely.
It's favor of the motion. Stand.
Was there a second to that?
Yes, there was a second.
Well, for, for my motion or Mr. Smith's comments?
But, well, Mr. Smith's comments would take an action.
It's not an action item. I think it came from committee this way, and I think council should take it up this way, so.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Other comments?
Madam Mayor, lots of items come from committee certain ways, and we vote them and make amendments and modifications. In fact, we even grant one-year exceptions, commonly practiced around here, so it's not an unreasonable, uncommon request to separate those two.
Will the person who made the motion give consideration to separating it into two motions?
No. I think if this motion fails, someone's welcome to make another motion, but I'd like these to be considered together.
Thank you very much. Mr. Nichols, do you have a comment?
No comment.
Anyone else with comments? I have someone signed up to speak.
Yes, ma'am. Urban Evans.
This order states motion of my speaking time, because I want you to have a copy.
I'll pass it down for you.
Thanks.
Just hand them all to me and I'll hand them over.
Yeah, I'm not under regulation anymore, fortunately, for a lot of reasons. Good evening. For March edition of the Mulberry News, reported the internal Mount Pleasant proposal to increase the mayor's pay to $42,000 per year, 75 percent increase of $18,000, and to increase town council pay from $8,700 to $15,000, a 42 percent increase of $6,300. This proposal should be unanimously voted down by town council. Public servants of the town tax-paying citizenry of the tradition of Mayor Holman and Governor Edwards would not allow such a violation of the stewardship of the trust and confidence in place in them by the voting public. Exorbitant self-granted payments by the public treasury would be a mockery of the good governance established by these preceding public leaders and would be corrosive of the public's bond to local government. Public servants remain mindful of the public they serve. According to Bureau of Labor Statistics, today's average wage has just about the same purchasing power as it did in 1979, and the average wage gain in 2014 was 2.4 percent. Mount Pleasant's full-time employees were eligible to receive merit pays, raises of 3.5 percent in 2014. Mount Pleasant's sons and daughters, who serve as soldiers, sailors, airmen, and marines, enjoyed a 1 percent increase in basic pay in 2014. Public servants would employ the 4.4 million in additional taxes and fees legislated in 2014 to pay down debt, build contingencies for man-made and natural disasters, and being ever mindful of the public welfare and the importance of limited prudent government. The Mount Pleasant public respects the service and sacrifice that all of you make. Let's maintain that government tradition that's been established by the town's leadership traditions. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you please state your name and address for the record?
I'm sorry. My name is Urban Evans, and I live at 2144 Shell Ring Circle.
Thank you, Urban. I appreciate that.
Thank you, ma'am.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Can we have a roll call?
Mr. Carrier.
Aye.
Mr. Carrier votes yes. Mr. Garch?
No.
Mr. Garch votes no. Mr. Glasson?
Aye.
Mr. Glasson votes yes. Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols votes yes. Mr. O'Neill?
Aye.
Mr. O'Neill votes yes. Mr. Santos?
No.
Mr. Santos votes no. Mr. Smith?
No.
Mr. Smith votes no. Ms. Stokes Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Stokes Marshall votes yes. Mayor Page?
Yes.
Mayor Page votes yes.
Thank you. Item number two on your agenda?
I've got, actually, three.
Okay.
Item number two is a recommendation to name the East Cooper Habitat for Humanity as the 100 percent recipient of the proceeds from the blessing of the fleet and seafood festival. Committee was given description of this charity by staff, and the committee recommended this organization unanimously. Therefore, I place this in the form of a motion to council.
I have a motion and a second to name Habitat for Humanity as the beneficiary of the blessing of the fleet. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the ayes carry it.
The third item was approval of the request to apply for a tourism advertising grant. Again, this grant would allow $45,000 in matching funds. It's a one-to-one match, and funds are spent towards marketing initiatives and promoting the town of Mount Pleasant. The committee unanimously endorsed this grant. The council, as such, I place this in the form of a motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And the ayes have it. Fire Committee.
Madam Mayor, we didn't have a meeting, but we, first one report, Carnival Cruise Lines, some years ago, we started a donation program for Carnival Cruise Lines with, with mattresses and refrigerators and different things. They weren't using the various entities like orphanages and Crisis Ministry and homeless shelter. And they came up with some stretchers, and they asked if I knew anybody who wanted any, and I thought the fire department would be a good, good group to donate them to. So I, I talked to the chief, and he sent some of his firefighters over to the ship, and we were able to take them around, and they were able to learn how to fight fires on a, on a ship, which is very important, because we have the automatic aid to the city of Charleston, and if there is a fire at Wando Terminal or one of our terminals will be responding. So it was a good opportunity for them to talk to the firefighters onboard the ships, to learn how they fight fires, and, and look at the equipment they have, and, and go up on the bridge and see how they're able to, to see where a fire is on the computers and be able to shut doors electronically and things like that. So I thought it was very helpful. And then they donated five stretchers to us so that we could use for medical training and, and our personnel. So I thought that was very helpful and very beneficial to the fire department. Also, Chief, if you would, I'll, I'll let you get up and, and talk about this International PR Reagan's Award for Employee Communications in Informational and Educational Video category that we were up for. A nice award, so I'll let you explain it to him, chief.
My pleasure, sir. Thank you, Mr. Santos. This is one recognizing of a PSA that the fire department with the cooperation of our communication department, and all of what we did, a PSA on CPR and the importance of AED that we filmed out at the Farmers Market. It has been nominated as one of the funds for this national award, similar to the award that we were voted on All American Cities. So we have competition against Fortune 500 companies. So this would be such a great award if we received it. If you get a chance, it's online right now, please, and we have some of our, some of the most wonderful actors in the town that work here, so there's a, a joint effort between us and the whole town department. So I have to take my hat off to Martine and her group for making this happen. So we, we are actually waiting for an announcement. In March. Thank you very much.
Nice job, Martine.
Very good.
Thank you.
And I conclude my report.
Thank you for your hard work. I appreciate you taking that leadership. Human Resources meeting?
No meeting and no report.
Patriots Point Development Authority did not meet. I have no report. Planning Committee, Mr. O'Neill?
Madam Mayor, we did meet, but everything that we saw at committee was on our agenda this evening, so therefore I have no report.
Thank you very much. Police Legal Judicial Committee, I'll turn that over to you, Mr. Demore.
Yes, Mayor. Committee discussed revisions to our special events ordinances, and also discussed whether to require or not a public comment period for public meetings. That matter will be found at the end of Council New Business in just a few moments.
Thank you for that, Mr. Demore. Public Services Committee.
The, we had a lot of discussion about stormwater and ponds and how they affect our community. I'd like to thank Hillary Repick. They did a great job educating us on the importance of stormwater and ponds, and there was a lot of discussion about the ponds, particularly around Shim Creek, and I have agreed to send a mayoral letter to all 90. There are 90 ponds that do affect the water quality on Shim Creek, so.
That's nine zero, Mayor?
Nine zero. Yes, Hillary's not here, but that was the correct number. And, you know, some of the older ponds, we cannot enforce them to do maintenance that are aesthetic, but we can certainly ask them and remind them of the importance of the watershed and the quality of water. And that's what I have for Public Services Recreation.
Madam Mayor, I'd just like, just to, just to kind of give Hillary a shout out. She does a tremendous job of working with these. I mean, she has yeoman's job, trying to keep track of all the lakes and all the outfalls. There's, like she said, 90 outfalls just in Shim Creek, and she is on top of it. I mean, I'm very impressed with how well she handles it and does. And I just want to just give her that recognition, because she does work very hard, and she's, she's on top of it.
Thank you, Gary. She is certainly our master of muck, and I agree. She does a fantastic job.
Does she like that title?
Well, you know, I think she does like it, and I don't think she.
Maiden.
The maiden, okay. She's the maiden of muck. I, I take it back. Okay. She's not here to defend herself. We won't talk anymore about the wonderful job she does. Recreation Committee.
Madam Mayor and council, we did not meet, but I thought you'd be interested in the numbers of February. We had a total youth increase month to month, February to February, of 155 participants. Our adult tennis had an increase of 142. Our swim lessons had an increase of 418 month to month. Senior center continues to grow. We're at 2,700 folks over there. We do have an Easter egg hunt at Alhambro on March 18th, so please don't come, because I don't have enough parking around my house.
Okay, thank you. Yes, or you have a comment, Mr. Santos?
I'm sure probably everybody read the article about the Charleston County School District wanting to get into the middle school football program, and I think that's going to be seriously detrimental to our middle school football program in Mount Pleasant. And I just hope the Recreation Committee might be able to meet sometime soon, and let's look, take a good look at that, because it's certainly going to affect our citizens and our kids that are in our programs, because if they don't make, they don't make the Charleston County School District's team, I'm not sure we're going to have enough kids to put together our own team. So I'm not sure where they're going to be able to play. Not only that, but fields, who's going to get the first opportunity to use the fields? Will it be us or them? And I think we, I think we get them after they use them, so it'll push our teams further back from being able to, to practice. And I'm just hoping Recreation Committee maybe can take this up sooner rather than later. At least let us know what's going on with that so we can prepare.
Thank you. Transportation, Mr. Demore?
Yes, Mayor. The Transportation Committee, chaired by yourself, discussed next steps regarding cutting traffic in Groves Cooper Estates in North Carolina.
We did. We've had lots and lots of discussion about traffic. Water Works Commission, Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a report only. The Mount Pleasant Water Works Commissioners like to thank Town Administrator, Mr. Demore, for attending the Utility Management Conference, and hopefully found it worthwhile and educational. Beginning in March, the Raleigh Institute will be conducting a customer service survey by phone of 400 randomly selected Mount Pleasant Water Works customers. And finally, the Mount Pleasant Water Commissioners' annual retreat will be held this Thursday, March 12th, from 9 to 3. Commissioners will hear presentations on and discuss the capital improvement plan, preliminary operating budgets, funding plans, and the impact on rates. This concludes my report.
Water Supply?
No meeting, no report.
Thank you. Administrator's report, Mr. Demore?
Announcing three vacancies on our volunteer boards, one on the Planning Commission, one on the Board of Zoning Appeals, and another on the Historic.
Thank you very much. Moving on to Council New Business. Item number one under New Business is a first reading authorizing Mount Pleasant Water Works to have a revenue parity bond.
Move for first reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for first reading. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And the ayes have it.
First reading, ordinance number 15023, an ordinance authorizing issuance of a not exceeding $14 million Water Works and Sewer System Revenue Parity Bond, Series 2015A, of the town of Mount Pleasant, South Carolina.
Item number two is another ordinance authorizing the issuing of a note exceeding $2.5 million for Water Works revenue parity.
Move for first and second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the ayes have it.
First reading, ordinance number 15024, an ordinance authorizing issuance of a not exceeding $2.5 million Water Works and Sewer System Revenue Parity Bond, Series 2015B, of the town of Mount Pleasant, South Carolina.
Item number three is a first reading on an ordinance to amend the sections of the Mount Pleasant Code of Ordinances pertaining to the Mount Pleasant Memorial Waterfront or. Have a motion and a second for first reading. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the ayes have it.
Wait.
Madam Mayor, I think there was some gentlemen signaling that they had signed.
Oh, I'm so sorry. You just wanted to speak under.
Well, I wasn't trying to speak, but I do, I believe there's a missed print. I think there's a note not issued, so we'll have to get that out.
Clarity, it couldn't be.
What you read is the first time you said a bill exceeding, and then when Mr. Demore raised, it's not exceeding.
And not is correct. So what do we need for clarification? Is this in the record? It's in the record for clarification. Thank you for pointing that out.
First reading, ordinance number 15025, an ordinance to amend various sections of Chapter 97 of the Mount Pleasant Code of Ordinances pertaining to Mount Pleasant Memorial Waterfront Park Special Events.
Thank you. Item number four is an ordinance to amend various sections of Chapter 116 of the Mount Pleasant Code of Ordinances pertaining to special events.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And the ayes have it.
That's first reading, ordinance number 15026, an ordinance to amend various sections of Chapter 116 of the Mount Pleasant Code of Ordinances pertaining to special events.
Along that same line, item number five is a first reading of an ordinance to amend various sections of the Chapter 141 of the Mount Pleasant Code of Ordinances pertaining to prohibited activity at Town and Parks.
Move for first reading. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion? Mr. Smith, do you have a comment?
I just, my fellow council member, Ms. Barrett, reminded me that that includes no swimming in Shim Creek.
It includes what?
No swimming.
It's just in our park.
Just saying.
Thank you for clarifying, thank you for clarifying that first, Mr. Smith. Any other comments? We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And the ayes have it.
First reading, ordinance number 15027, an ordinance to amend various sections of Chapter 141 of the Mount Pleasant Code of Ordinances pertaining to prohibited activity at Town and Parks.
Item number six is a first reading of an ordinance to abandon road right of way, and this is at Riverwalk Phase Two.
Move for first reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And the ayes have it.
First reading.
Question?
No, no. I got a question on the one before that, but I'll wait until Mr. Demore reads what he's going to read.
First reading, ordinance number one five zero two eight, ordinance to abandon road right of way pursuant to South Carolina Code five dash twenty-seven dash one fifty, Riverwalk Phase Two.
Question?
Yeah, when Mr. Smith was, he's having a little trouble with me because all about swimming in Shim Creek. Because the question didn't come up on this one, about people jumping off the Shim Creek Bridge. And I see it every summer, and you know, I don't know, I don't know that we have any signs out there that says do not jump off the bridge. Maybe Mr. Demore, you could speak to that, about people jumping off that bridge, and they should be doing that.
Well, sir, um...
That's where it just triggered all this conversation about swimming in the creek.
Be happy to study and look at it, sir.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yes, so you have a comment, Mr. Nichols?
Just one thing, and I appreciate, I don't know if there's a sign out there or not. But as I drive through Mount Pleasant, the one thing that we don't have a shortage of is signs directing us what to do and how to do it.
I myself am not a good fan of signs.
Sign mecca.
I'm not a big fan of signs myself.
Well, for what it's worth, I did, I did it when I was twelve, and I got a beating that lasted six months, so I haven't forgotten.
Might be time for a new beating, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Mayor Portem, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I have a comment. And with all due respect, Mr. Nichols, about the signs all over the town, all right? And I'm on the same page with you. But looking at it from an ounce of proportions, okay? And someone made the sign, you, I think, made the comment about somebody jumping up into Shim Creek.
That was Mr. Smith living...
I mean, that, that can very easily be a reality, all right? I mean, if someone wants to jump, they're going to jump anyway, one way or the other. But would it not behoove us as a council to have a sign up there that says no jumping up into Shim Creek, okay? And if they did it, and if they survived, they probably would end up suing the town anyway. But at least if we put, position the town in a proactive position and put the notice up there.
Thank you, Mayor. We will let Mr. Demore do some research on the...
I just want to put that out there.
Sign jumping Shim Creek issue. I've never jumped off, have jumped off a few bridges in Low Country. I have not jumped off that one. I intend to. We certainly don't want to encourage anyone to jump off any bridges. Okay. Thank you. Item number seven is the adoption of a resolution to accept the dedication of property totaling two two point two nine acres. Everyone with me on item number seven?
We do adopt resolution. Second.
I have a motion as second to adopt the resolution. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolution one five zero three one.
Thank you. Item number eight is the consideration of mandatory public comment period for committee and commission meetings. We had this in my committee, was not recommended to take action. We had examples of our meeting notices and much discussion about meetings. And we do hold lengthy public comment periods, but this was put on by Mr. Santos, and I will turn it over to you, Mr. Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, Mayor, this isn't about committees and commission meetings. It's about a process, the public process. You know, when people want to come to these meetings, they get babysitters, and they have to make arrangements in their private lives in order to come here. And, and you know, sometimes they're able to speak. In our council meetings, they have a requirement, nine eight oh four eight ordinance allows them the opportunity to speak. So they know they can speak when they come here, but they don't know that when they go to some of the other meetings. And I'm not trying to beat up on any, on the commission or any other committee meetings, because it's not about them, it's just about the process. It just gives them, you know, comfort in knowing that if they decide to come to one of our meetings, they will have the opportunity to speak. And that's all it is. It's, it's really not a big deal. It's a great thing for the public. I think it's a good thing for us to do to tell the public that we encourage their, their participation. We're transparent, and we want to hear from them. And really, to me, it's, it's really not a big deal. I think it's a good, a good ordinance to do. And if, if the town council meetings are required to be public, then I think certainly are appointed in commissions and committees, which is the same, that's all. I'm not, I'm not trying to beat up on anybody, any of the committees or commission meetings. I'm just trying to make it to where people know they'll have the opportunity to speak when they come, that's all.
Thank you for that, Mr. Santos. No action?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve mandatory public comment period for our committee, standing committee and commission meetings.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion as second. Any further discussion? Mr. O'Neil?
For a point of clarity, do we already have discussion at committee meetings? Is that already required as it is a subsection of council? For ordinance, or it's only for Tuesday night council meetings?
Only for Tuesday night.
It's not required in committee meetings?
Everything is...
Must they...
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Are you clear on your question? Thank you very much. Ms. Stokes-Marshall?
Madam Mayor, all council members. The past sixteen and a half years, effective as of September nineteen ninety-eight. I think the only times that I have not attended each and every committee meeting, whether I served on the committee or not, has been if my, I had a health issue and could not physically be here. I do not recall a single time, regardless as to what committee it may have been, that anyone in the public audience was not provided an opportunity to address those committees. That was just automatically done, effective as of nineteen ninety-eight September election. Prior to that, if an item was not on the agenda, council, it didn't make a difference who you were. You were not allowed to speak or address that issue. Council took a vote that the public could always be allowed to address council meetings, and it passed. And there has never been an issue with that. I think the issue, the, the matter that brought this up was because there was a project where there was information that was submitted at the last minute, and the commission nor the people in attendance had an opportunity to review the information. So therefore, they were not empowered with that information that would have given them the knowledge and understanding of the new information to make an informed, intelligent decision. And I don't think that's, we should throw the baby out with the bathwater.
Thank you, Ms. Stokes-Marshall. Mr. Santos?
Yeah, I, I appreciate Councilman Thompson's and Stokes-Marshall's comments. I can tell you twice, and it's happened to me once before as well, so it's, and, and I'm not here to beat up on that. I, that's kind of water under the bridge. I do think the commission, prior to going back in executive session and coming out and deferring what should have heard from the public. That's why the public came, that they wanted to have their voices heard. Instead, instead of hearing from them, then going back and, and debating it in executive session, they went executive session first, came out, and then they voted on it. And so all I'm saying is, I mean, I'm not trying to be... They deferred it, or they voted to defer it. They voted on it. And so what I'm saying is, they should have given them the opportunity, since they took the time out of their day to come to address the commission, they should have heard from them first before they went into executive session. But that's neither here nor there. It's not about the commission, it's about the process. And I just think if, if people know that they'll have the opportunity to address their council, maybe we'll get more people that will come and talk to us. But it's about transparency, really. It's about them being able to come and address us on issues. Now, now they can do that with council for sure, but, but some of them, you know, it's not mandatory. It depends on who the chairman is. You know, so that's all I'm saying. I, I just want to make it mandatory. I think it's a great ordinance to have. I think it'll be well received from the public, and, and it's very simple. I mean, I'm, I'm ready to vote.
Mr. Nichols, did you have another comment?
I did. I'm almost ready to vote, but let me draw a couple considerations. I come from it from a slightly different angle than I think my fellow council members who have already spoken. And I think they're both, interestingly enough, coming really from, in my view, really the same place. I have not either personally, nor have I experienced through somebody else, seen somebody who showed up to a meeting and wished to address a committee or commissioner, whomever, turned down. I have not had that experience. I understand that others have had that personal experience. If, I think, if, if it's happened, it's been extraordinarily, extraordinarily rare. Okay. And then I heard from another council member who said, I, I think this was what I heard, is that it doesn't happen, council. This is already the practice of our commissions, in our committees, and of this council. And so then I think about, that's a good practice. That's a best practice, in my view. And I put on my lawyer hat, which is what I do during the day, and there's a word in law called codify. And codify, by definition, means to place something into a law or a code or an ordinance. If this is already the best practice, and we go down the line here saying it is the best practice to hear from our citizens at these meetings, then I don't see what the downside is to placing into an ordinance or codifying the idea that has been going on for sixteen years into an ordinance. And for that reason, I'm going to vote yes on Mr. Santos's motion.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Mr. Glass?
So in, I'm trying to understand what you said, Mr. Nichols, and I wasn't even going to comment, but to codify, in your terms, you would open up the floor to anyone to speak for any reason at any meeting for any length of time. And if a thousand people lined up to speak about any subject, tires blew out on the street, traffic light went out, my dog chewed the paper up, that we would allow them to come in and speak at that, or have the autonomy to the chairman to have the decision that you're going to speak on a subject that we're actually addressing? And that's where the differential is. I don't think anyone disagrees with allowing the public to speak as openly and as often as possible. Ms. Stokes-Marshall hit the nail right on the head. If that, the items that we have before us are incomplete, or we're not going to vote or discuss them, then why have public input? Because at the proper time, we can have public input on that. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Reply?
Brief reply. And, and I appreciate that, those comments, and I, and I think about examples like that. And then I say to myself, are council meetings, these meetings already open for that? Have we already codified it, made it into an ordinance to practice for these council meetings? And when I started coming to council here ten or fifteen years ago, have I come to a meeting where a thousand people have come up and signed up to speak about any of the topics that you just mentioned? And the answer to that is, in my experience, no. In fact, every once in a while, we'll get somebody who, there's something on their, on their mind, and they come here. But ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, they are speaking to what is germane and relevant, either current in the news or to this council, or in their neighborhood. So I appreciate that, but I don't see that as a, as an issue for me.
Thank you. Anyone else comment?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir?
Thank you. Councilman Santos, we, we spoke at the, at the committee meeting about this issue. Earlier tonight, you stated this isn't about a particular council or commissioner, committee, commission member. But in fact, it really, the item specifically, if I understood you correctly, at the committee level was regarding the item that was deferred at the Planning Commission.
That was the second one, yeah. There was, there was another one as well, but it doesn't matter whether it's commission or committee. To me, they're both the same when it comes to this, but...
Right. But where, where a lot, your point was, which is I was going to make, is that a lot of folks took the time to come here and couldn't speak on that issue. That was your point you made of that. And it was, it is unfortunate, because people did come, and I, I do... But if there are, if there is informa, if an item is deferred, that means there's no action taken on that item. And all the discussions for that item would happen when it comes back on an agenda. Is that, that's in the form of a question, is that correct? David, if an item is deferred, that means there's, the action is to defer the item, meaning it's not debated and discussed. And then when it comes back on the agenda, then the item can be debated and discussed at that time.
That's right.
In, at some point in the future, people, it is unfortunate. I do understand and sympathize wholeheartedly with people taking their time out of the day to come to a meeting. But it just seems to me that no one, the commissioners, nor the people present to speak on the issue, has all the information to be able to speak from an informed perspective that would weigh the outcome on a deferred item. So I just, I feel like this is a, a layer of bureaucracy and overreach of government. And I, I just, for that reason, and the fact that we already have in practice, even though we're not required, as Mr. Councilman Nichols said, on commission and committee levels, both at the beginning of those commission levels and when each item comes up, public engagement is important, and I support it and encourage it. But I think this is a little bit of overreach, in my opinion. So I just wanted you to know why I wouldn't be supporting it, that's all. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So, so having public comment period is overreaching government? That's what you're saying? Allowing the public, so, so, but just, just to come back to you, just to come back to what you said. Had, had they allowed public comment period before they went back, maybe they have gotten some information that may have changed their mind. Maybe they have, would have denied it. Maybe they would have approved it. If they'd had public comment before, people knew what they were going to talk about when they came. And so they didn't have that opportunity to express their feelings and their thoughts on what it was. They knew what they were going to talk about. The problem was, they didn't have that opportunity. And all I'm saying is, we ought to always give our, our citizens an opportunity to speak on things before we vote on it. That's just, to me, it's just a good, we do it in council, and what's good for council should be good for our standing committees and commissions. That's all I'm saying.
Just for clarification, there was public comment at that meeting. Just for clarification. Do you have a response, Mr. Smith?
Just very simple. I have the committee meeting agendas here with me. I was at, as I have for one hundred percent of the committee meetings thus far on my time on council. Every single item that comes up, in my opinion, has, after the committee discusses and vets it out, the chairman, I have always witnessed, allowing people from the floor in our crowded, small room that I'm looking forward to us being out of at some point in the future with our new town hall, has the opportunity to speak. So I by no stretch of the imagination would agree with the twisted interpretation of my representation of overreach with requiring a standing, open public comment on every single committee agenda item as a result of one, two incidents that happened at, at a planning commission meeting, specifically when that item was deferred, meaning that no one's voice isn't going to be heard. When the item comes up for discussion and business, the people's voice would be heard at that time. So I, again, that's restating my former statement earlier that seemed to be not clear. Thank you.
Thank you. We've had a motion as second and lots of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No. Do you have that? You want to call a vote? Call the vote.
Mr. Carrier?
Nay.
Mr. Carrier votes no. Mr. Garch?
Aye.
Mr. Garch votes yes. Mr. Glass?
No.
Mr. Glass votes no. Mr. Nichols?
Aye.
Mr. Nichols votes yes. Mr. O'Neil?
Aye.
Mr. O'Neil votes yes. Mr. Santos?
Aye.
Mr. Santos votes yes. Mr. Smith?
Nay.
Mr. Smith votes no. Ms. Stokes-Marshall?
No.
Ms. Stokes-Marshall votes no. Mayor Page?
No.
Mayor Page votes no.
Congratulations. Thank you for it. Item number B under old business, there is no old business to address. And number seven, executive session, I understand we have a need to go into executive session to discuss legal and contractual matters pertaining pending litigation. Do I have a motion?
Come here.
And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
End of executive session.
Let's go, Kenny.
You got a plan?
I'm just going to say it.
It happened, but it wasn't happening.
And, and, and that's something.
I saw him.
I have no information.
I'm sitting here.
Hi, Thomas.
How you doing?
Good. Let's work it out.
I worked in slaughters.
That's all she had to do.
It's like turning down a car.
Yeah.
I don't want to exercise, but they just, I take it out, and I box it, and just, pulls me up to the seat.
You're supposed to be some kind of exercise.
Personally, I'm used to this.
I work with Paul George. I showed him the shoes myself, so.
Jeremy Coe. So thanks for your help. So I walked in right after it happened. I'm assuming there was no.
No, no issues.
I thought I was timing it so well. He's at 10:15, so. So y'all move faster tonight?
We did. Normally, we're a little.
Yeah, because last time, I mean, I was at, it took a lot longer to get through to that part, so. But we'll be back in April.
Okay.
There probably will be any issues that either.
Okay, thank you. Have a good night.
Thanks. Nice to meet you.
My son just started playing.
Did he play with?
Not too long.
They have, we played them, I mean, their team isn't great, but there's a lot of players that can actually, like, really good, have a lot of potential.
Thank you so much.
One of the kids, just, I know they have speed, and just, it's like, it's not for me, the kids. Because we, I'm, I played with Wanda, and I just, like, you can see potential in teams. Like, we played SOA, and barely won.
Yeah.
And, it's like 19th in the nation now.
They recruited him right after they played Wanda. His coach, the coach, the coaches over there was his football coach in the school. Yeah, so he called my son, begging him to play with him, and then he was like, okay, I'll try it. So he has no idea what he's doing. He has no clue. But he's, he's going to give it a try.
Thank you.
So, are you going to bring, like, any situations here?
Um, during the general comments period, you can stand up, you can sign your dis speech on stand up, and say your piece for two minutes.
So, is it on?
Anything more? As long as it's something related that council can tackle.
What's something?
Um, if somebody's having issues being in the neighborhood, or. Thank you.
So, are you, like, any situation to hear?
Um, during the general comments period, you can stand up, you can sign your dispute on stand up, and say your piece for two minutes.
So, what?
Anything, as long as it's something related that council can tackle.
What's something?
Um, if somebody's having issues being in the neighborhood, or just.